Good to go. Thank you, Sean. It is Monday, July 3rd, 2023 at 7:30. I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order and ask Administrator Burgman to please call the roll.
Chesak.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
And Bevins.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is item number four, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, second by Stunek, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. A notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Terry, second by Chesak, any discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Chesak.
Yes.
Oday.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that is a consent calendar is adopted. Item number six, six A, is Safety and Public Works Committee Chair, Mike Oday.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had ten items on tonight's meeting. We did move number one down to number 10 in order to get those folks in here to speak on the detour. So would you like me to report that still as number one, or do you want me to?
You can do it either way. You can do it now.
All right, I'm just gonna do number one as it is on the paper, the discussion on Oak Street, the detour. Motion coming out of committee was to direct staff to come back and give us a report of the assessments and how we can change them in the future based on the damage from the detour, as well as looking into signage to help remove any heavy truck traffic from the detour, and ISO move.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Oday, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Any discussion? I just, one thing I did also hear, they were looking for some relief on assessments when those streets did get done.
Mm-hmm.
There's not, that's not part of the motion.
That is part of the, the motion is to have staff look into that.
Okay.
Percentage-wise, what can we do? What's a, is there a precedent for that? They're gonna get back to us with a report.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next was a discussion on the radar speed feedback sign quote for North 10th Street. Quote came back, just under 5,000 for the actual sign with the radar and digital readout, and then roughly another 4,000 or 5,000 for installation, including wiring and any underground electrical work that would go with it. Just seeing that cost and any future stop sign requests, that could add up pretty quickly. So we did direct staff to have the lilac bush trimmed back on that corner in the northwest, the northwest corner of that intersection that's blocking the line of sight for a lot of drivers. So that'll come back, that'll get cleared out by our streets crew whenever they can get to it. And we spoke with our police chief about just continuing to enforce any speeding violations or anything, but so far they have been out there quite a bit this summer, and as far as Chief Davis, and he can speak to this if he wants, but he recorded one speeder at 31 miles per hour. So it might be more of a perception thing, I still don't think that there's no risk there, but every intersection does carry a risk, and I think best option right now as a committee, we decided to continue as we have so far, along with clearing that line of sight. And there was no motion.
Thank you. Any comments, Chief? Okay, seems good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item was the event alley closure application for the Lakes area skate park event, and motion coming out of committee was to approve, what is this here? Oh, no, that's the wrong one. Now I'm getting all my stuff screwed up already. Motion coming out of committee was just to approve the attached application under the conditions listed in the attachment, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Oday, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Chairman Oday?
This is just a pop-up skate park, kind of a fundraiser for our skate park fundraising group. This is on the 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., right next to the Crossing Arts Alliance. They'll just be closing that section of that alley, just to the north of Laurel Street.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next was another approval of an event street closure application for the Baton Memorial Death, Baton Memorial March, not the death march. And recommendation coming out of committee was to approve the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Oday, second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman Oday?
Just tell you, this is a section of Wright Street between the armory and our trail. That will be closed from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's a, it's a, I believe a half marathon, so it does take quite a while, but that'll be closed, is that a Saturday?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. On that Saturday for the majority of the day.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion coming out of committee on the next one, and this is the approval of the Brainerd Transit fare increase. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the recommended fare increase to $4 for Brainerd originating dial ride trips, $8 for same-day service effective August 7th, 2023, ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Oday, second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman Oday?
So this is something that we've had, this was on our agenda back in May, and we sent these recommendations from the TAC committee to our partners, Crow Wing County, the City Pine River, the City of Baxter, and they did take our recommendations. In fact, Baxter actually increased their fees a little bit more than what we recommended to make up for some of the shortfalls. This was a two-to-one vote, Mr. Chesak being the dissenting vote, and it's not ideal, but in the end, this is our, this is our recommendation, and we did move to approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I'm struggling with this really, it's a, it's a service we provide, and we provide a lot of services to the people of Brainerd. It's a, you know, you look at, we had a request last year for $400,000 for lights for our memorial park. Now, is that something that'll get approved? It could. We've, I think, approved $50,000 to look at those lights and see that we can keep them operating, if I'm not mistaken. A lot of things we spend money on to provide a service to the people of Brainerd, and this is a very important service to the people who need it. It isn't necessarily a want, it is a need, and matter of fact, it wasn't too long ago there were three of us here that approved an $80,000 expenditure for a generator for City Hall that perhaps may not even get used. And I struggle with this because if you've never ridden the bus, if you don't know people who ride the bus, you see just how important it is to them. It's not just a ride, it's independence, and isn't that something that we have that day coming up tomorrow for our country? And it's $4 from 2:25. It was one and a quarter, we bumped it up to two and a quarter on May 1st. Now we're going to $4, so if I get on the bus in Brainerd, I'll pay $4, and if I go to Baxter, I'll return and it'll cost me $7, $11 round fare. Where currently it would be $4.50. That's almost tripling the cost. That's very hard for a lot of people to take. So I'm concerned also that we never, we got some numbers from our city engineer about the potential for a levy, and it's estimated to cost approximately $80,000 if things remain the same. So I'm, I'm not saying that, taking that lightly. So I would like to see us look at the numbers prior to six months. I think we should do this as an ongoing basis. We don't get the numbers until after the month is finished. We won't know what the ridership is affected, if this is approved by increasing the fare until at least a month after it takes effect. The numbers, you have to, obviously you gotta get those after they're done. So if we could look at this on a, I would like to see our staff do that, and I, if I could amend the motion to have staff just come back on a regular basis and keep us updated, would that be acceptable to the motion maker and the seconder?
Doesn't even have to be. You may.
Repeat the.
Well, just, instead of coming back in six months on a monthly basis once the statistics are finalized, if this $4 fare, or even if it isn't, just to keep a close eye on the numbers, that's all I'm asking to do.
Jeff, I will second your motion to amend, and then we can.
Okay. We have a motion to amend, and the amendment is to get monthly reports instead of twice a year on ridership. Okay? Any discussion on that little portion of the motion? Okay, Mr. Chair?
How often are we collecting this information?
We do do monthly reporting. I can just as well include it in the month, or our monthly Public Works Department report.
Excellent, yeah.
Any other discussions just on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor on the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. That motion carries, the motion is amended. We'll go back to the amended motion and ask if there's any discussion. And, Karen Terry, yes?
I agree with Councilmember Chesak in terms of the rate impact on the population. Oftentimes, the folks that need to ride the bus don't either have adequate transportation or adequate monies to be able to afford adequate transportation. I also know that our volunteer driver program through the county is hurting very much for volunteers to help take folks where they need to go, and so I'll be voting no on this increase as well. I am not sure what the answer is at this point, but that increase is pretty significant to people's budgets.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amended motion?
President Bevins, may I?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Mr. Chesak? You know, I, again, it's, it is a hard decision, and the bus does cost money, and fares over all these years have essentially paid for the operation of the bus. We shut down our economy, which I think in turn lent itself to having people find ways to get rides other than the bus. It scared a lot of people to ride the bus. And so now we're trying to rebuild that ridership, even though it was dropping off before 2020. And so we want to capture ridership, we want to get people riding the bus, that pays the cost. More people that ride, we can, we can do better. And the one thing I just look at on a personal note, I, where I live, there are a handful of people that ride the bus, and I think of the gal who lives next door to me, and she just, she's got, she, she'll sit down in the common room down there, and she smiles, and she loves people. She loves her God, she loves her apartment, she loves her few people in her family, and she likes people. And she just rode the other day, she went to the bank, she went to the post office. I think her bank is literally two to three blocks away from the post office, and she's not physical shape enough to ride, or drive, or to walk, or whatever, from the bank to the post office. So her ride cost her $6.75 to the bank, to the post office, and back home. With a $4 fare, that's gonna cost $12. So essentially, that's a, that's a big hit on somebody who doesn't have a lot of money. So I'm really concerned about that, and we, again, we look at the services we provide. This is a service that is extremely valuable to people who don't really have a lot otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign.
Aye.
Motion.
Oh.
We have a tie.
Fails.
We have a tie.
Mister.
Yes.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Attorney Langle is on virtually, on Webex.
Yes.
And he can address the tie.
Help us what to do.
Mr. President, Council, so, I mean, normally a tie vote is a failed vote. Under the city charter, the mayor is the tiebreaker. The mayor, obviously, is not there. However, paragraph 14 of the charter states that during the absence of the mayor from the city, I don't know that he's actually absent from the city, or the mayor's inability for any reason to discharge duties of his office, the president shall exercise all powers and discharge all duties of the mayor, which will lend itself to indicate that the president would have a second vote as the mayor in a tie, assuming that the council agrees that the mayor is either absent from the city, or he is unable to, for any reason, to discharge the duties of his office. Those are the two criteria. If neither one of those are true, then that entire provision does not come into play. You just have a tie vote, and it fails.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Joe's here. Okay, then I will, in the interest of bringing the group together to discuss this, I'm gonna vote as mayor against this to bring it back in two weeks. Okay, we will move on, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's see, we have, next was a discussion on the Trunk Highway 371B speed study. I don't see the study, we spoke about the study, it's written about in the memo, so any questions specifically about that study, I would direct to Mr. Dean. But we did direct Mr. Dean and staff to work with MINDOT, to come back with a proposed direction on a speed study, speed reduction type of study for the air, what was it called?
Demonstration project.
The demonstration project. You can just ask Jesse all questions on this one, I guess. Long story short, MINDOT is likely going to either try to or just increase the 30 mile an hour zone on South 6th Street to 35. We were discussing that we would like to see that stay at 30, but, you know, MINDOT does what they do. And looking into this would be coming up with something to help with demonstrating speed reduction, whether that's future bump outs, RRFBs, anything that might cause a little friction in the, in the traffic to slow it down. And that's my motion.
So, second. Motion by Oday, second by Chesak. Any discussions on what's happening here? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item was awarding the Trunk Highway 210 Washington Street Utility Replacement Engineering Services Contract. Motion coming out of committee was to award the Trunk Highway 210 Washington Street Reconstruction Project Utility Replacement Design Engineering Contract to SRF in the amount of $264,531, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Oday, second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman Oday?
I would just direct any questions to go towards Mr. Dean again. He can explain this one, along with the next two or three items, quicker than I can.
Any comments on this, Jesse? It seems pretty obvious.
No, sir, not unless you have quite specific questions.
We're gonna save some money, hopefully, is the plan?
No.
No.
Well, possibly.
Possibly.
Time.
Time.
That's money.
Time is money.
Any questions of our engineer? Hear, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is change orders one and two for improvement 22-06 Harrison Safe Routes to School, and we're recommending approval of the change orders one and two in the amounts of $11,179.84 and $2,475, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Oday, second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman Oday?
We ran into some issues with the grading, grading on this section of road. This is the best way to fix it, it keeps us under that $500,000 grant limit, and in the end, we'll turn out a project that doesn't crack, hopefully, in one year. So that's why we approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you. Next item was the final pay estimate for improvement 20-07 Sanitary Sewer Force Main Rehabilitation, and motion coming out of committee was to approve the final pay estimate for improvement 20-07 in the amount of $75,794.90, and ISO move.
Second. Motion by Oday, second by Chesak, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our final item was direction on active code enforcement cases, and motion coming out of committee was to follow staff recommendation on the case file for 624 Eighth Avenue Northeast, and ISO move.
Second. Motion by Oday, second by Chesak, any discussion? Any discussion? Chairman Oday?
This was junk and debris, as you see in the pictures here. I'm not sure if there's a remodel going on or what, but there's, there's been junk and debris in the yard, obviously, and they have $600 in fines, we haven't heard from them, so we're moving forward, as we have set precedent for in the past.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
End of report.
Next up, we'll do item six, Council Committee Reports, item 6B is Personal and Finance. Who's in, who's running the show? Mr. Stunek, Chief Stunek?
I am, running the show.
Fast.
I can't fill Gabe's shoes, but I can sit in this chair.
You want to sit in this chair?
No, I don't want to sit in this chair. You might get something.
All right.
We have three agenda items, they should be relatively quick. The first one is our police chief Davis, and he's authorizing the sale, or we're gonna authorize the sale of a retired police car, number 444, utilizing central Minnesota Dealer Action, and ISO move.
And I second.
Motion by Stunek, second by Terry, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion passes, please proceed.
Okay, number two, we have a motion to approve the 2023 BPU Finance Manager Wage Grid as presented by Chris Schubert, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Stunek, second by Terry, any discussion? Any discussion? Mr. President? Mr. Chesak?
I would just like to say that I know the public utilities is very eager to get this approved, and they're gonna really be happy they can move forward on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Okay, our last item is the hiring of a new employee. So the hiring of a new employee is to ratify the hiring of Brittany Tollison, effective June 26, 2023. Further, that should be placed on step one of the administrative specialist wage grid, which is $21.85 per hour, and ISO move.
Motion by Stunek, second by Terry, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
I forgot to ask earlier, but is this, this is a new position or a position that's being refilled?
Let's ask Chris or Jesse or Administrator Burgman. Chris?
So.
HR Director Schubert.
Thank you. This is replacing a person that resigned, well, what, two months ago, so.
That's what, that's what I thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak, thank you. HR Director Schubert, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries. Anything else, Chief Stunek?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item seven.
What?
Unfinished business, item 7A is a call for applicants, as the mayor is not here. I will call all of the openings. We have a terms, Charter Commission, two terms to expire in 2026 and two terms to expire in 2025, all on December 31st. Library Board's got one term to expire 2025. A rental dwelling license board of appeal has five terms to expire 2024, and the Transportation Advisory Committee, one term to expire 2023, as well as an economic development authority term to expire in 2028 on the 7th of September. As Council President, I have one position open, December 31st of 2026, and that's the Parking Commission. All of these applications can be found at www.cibrainerm.us/boards, or just Google City of Brainerd, and you'll find us. Item eight is new business. Item 8A is a call for a public hearing on a redevelopment TIF district. This is, Mr. Sharpt, and here, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet to help us make a good decision on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing further to add other than our TIF advisors, Baker Tilly will be present for the 17th if we do hold a public hearing, as well as the developer, D.W. Jones, for that redevelopment project.
Perfect. Any questions of Eric? Any questions of Eric? Hearing none, we're looking, the staff recommendation is to hold the public hearing on a potential creation of a redevelopment TIF district, that's Tax Increment Financing District, to redevelop the former Thrifty White Building by D.W. Jones, to be held at the city council's regular council meeting on July 17th, 2023. Looking for that motion or something different.
So moved.
Motion by Stingline to approve, second by Oday. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign? Well, we've got something going on the 17th. Next up is new business, item B, consider a conditional use permit for daycare facility at 703 Oak Street. Mr. Krambek, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the Brainerd Family YMCA applied for a conditional use permit to operate a commercial daycare facility at 703 Oak Street, and plan to provide services for 24 infants, 42 toddlers, a staff of 12 teachers, two part-time employees, as well as an administrative leader. For outdoor play, the proposed daycare facility will transport the kids across Oak Street to the existing YMCA playground that is located at 602 Oak Street, so there's no screening requirement for this conditional use permit at 703 Oak Street. The proposed daycare facility will have 26 total off-street parking spaces with an off-street loading zone that can accommodate 10 to 12 vehicles. This is the existing parking lot at the property. The Planning Commission considered this request at their regularly scheduled meeting on July 19th, and unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff?
President Bevins?
Yes, Mr. Chesak?
Yes, where do they plan on disposing all their diapers?
A large dumpster outside.
Sorry.
Same place we put them here from the council. Any further legitimate questions? Hearing none. The recommendation from staff is the approval of the conditional use permit for a daycare facility at 703 Oak Street. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
So moved by Stingline, second by Terry. Any discussion? Tiffany Stingline?
I want to mention that the term no-brainer was used in our Planning Commission meeting in discussion of this project. The only, and I don't even know if I want to call it a concern, but was that if we're moving kids across the street, we might need to come and look at this when it's all done, and they're doing that, to see if we want to need to put up the flashers for pedestrians crossing. That was the only kind of, and not specific to the actual permit.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
Maybe installing a pneumatic tube.
Put the toddlers there.
I want to go to that detail. That's all I'm saying. If I can pneumatic tube, if it dumps out right into the pool, that'd be awesome. Any further discussion? Meaningful discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries. Next up, it's 801. One of my favorite agenda items is public forum, time allocated for citizens to bring matters, not on the agenda, to the attention of the council, we like to see you keep it to three to five minutes. We've got no one on, online that I can see. Anybody in the audience wish to come forward and bring forth something that we haven't or aren't discussing this evening? Anybody at all? Third time's the charm. We will close the public forum and move on to staff reports. To my left, HR Director Schubert. Fire Chief Holmes.
Nothing, sir.
Online, we've got Attorney Langle, anything?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for joining us. James Kramvik, Community Development Director?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items here. So at the last planning commission meeting, besides the CUP, there is also an application from Country Manor for a PUD rezoning, preliminary and final plat, and planned unit development. Country Manor did request that this would be heard at the next planning commission meeting based on their avail, or at the next city council meeting based on their availability. So that'll be the second meeting in July. Also, as part of that meeting, Planning Commission did review off-street parking regulations and potential ordinance changes with that. So staff has reached out to the parking commissions to set up a meeting to review the draft ordinance that Planning Commission did review as well. So that, we will also be working in the future here. Also, Planning Commission will be holding a special meeting on July 12th to review the proposed 805 Laurel Street Project and TIF district. It was brought to our attention from Baker Tilly that Planning Commission does have to review it ahead of the meeting, or potentially ahead of the meeting, in order to show its relation to the Brainerd Comprehensive Plan, and whether the project and TIF districts support the Comprehensive Plan. So there will be a special meeting on July 12th at 6:00 PM for the Planning Commission meeting. Also, this past week, the EDA held a workshop on June 28th. A couple of good conversation topics. The first one, the EDA considered BRE interviews that were conducted by Bladech and some of the area businesses, what the, what the EDA could improve on or add to some of the programs that they're already doing. One of the main topics was essentially maybe creating programs to incentivize businesses along Washington Street, as well as potentially changing the zoning code to allow for mixed-use development, essentially commercial on the bottom, residential on the top, along Washington Street's commercial corridor as well. So next EDA meeting, there'll be further discussion on this topic. EDA also, at this workshop, continued to discuss redevelopment opportunities for Westwood Mobile Home Park, next to the mall, as it was one of the goals and objectives of the EDA this year. And that is everything, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. City Engineer and Public Works Director Dean?
Have a happy fourth tomorrow.
Thank you. Finance Director Hillman? ITGIS Director Strong?
Allison.
And how about from the Police Department? Got anything going on tomorrow, maybe?
We're looking forward to tomorrow.
Yeah, I bet.
Okay, I'll remember that two weeks from now. Administrator Bergman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, I have a few items. First of all, the solar array ribbon cutting was held on June 27th. Big thanks to the commission. It is a pretty awesome-looking solar array. I called it a solar garden, but wow, there are a lot of solar panels out there. So really great in moving towards reducing our energy and going more green. So big thanks to the commission. Secondly, Brent Palteir is the lead for the Council of Real Estates for the Consulting Corps. Talked about this before. This is a team that's going to be in town. They're gonna take a look at some of our property that may be available for housing development. They are gonna be here the week of August 5th. They are very interested in hearing from city council members on what you think or what we need here in the City of Brainerd. As soon as I get more detailed information, we will make sure that we share that with the city council. Right now, looking at Tuesday, August 6th, for those interviews, but again, I'll confirm that when it gets closer. Secondly, or thirdly, the BPU Commission did meet also on the 27th. They did discuss the organizational chart that they have for the department. The commission did approve that. That information will be brought to the city council during our joint meeting with the commission on July 31st, so we can have further discussion about that. And last, but certainly not least, the council a few months ago did approve us going with Civic Clerk, which is going to be our new software where you will access the city council agenda. And so that, I believe that we are planning on implementing in August. So again, stay tuned. We will have some training set up, and again, I'm sure some more detailed information on how that looks. We believe that it's going to be easier, both for staff, for council, and also for the public. So stay tuned on that, Mr. Chair.
President Bevins, can I ask a question about the dates she provided? I think maybe you mean September? You said the week of August 5th and Tuesday, August 6th. That would be, it says aren't the right dates.
Let me double check, council member.
I think you're talking September, or you got the wrong month?
Sorry, August 7th. My apologies. The week of August 7th, August 8th would be the interviews. Thank you, Councilmember Chesak.
No problem. Thank you. Acting Chair Stunick, anything to add from the corner?
I'm sure everybody will be aware that tomorrow is the 4th of July. I know the mayor's not here, but I'm sure he's wanting everybody to participate. The parade's at 6:00, fireworks at 10:15. Have a great day.
Thank you. Kara?
Nothing here.
Mike?
Nothing out today, thank you.
Tiffany?
Well, James kind of stole my thunder on the PUD, but that'll be, that'll be a fun one. Just gonna let everyone know, that'll be a fun one to talk about. And with the mayor not here, I feel like somebody needs to mention Arts in the Park was a blast. I was at a booth again this year, made a lot of origami butterflies, if anybody wants some.
Yeah.
All right, I will bring them next time. So that was a great time, great to see all the folks out in the community, and just wanted to make sure to mention that, since he's not here to do so.
Mr. Chesak?
Thank you, Council President Bevins. I have just a couple of quick things. I just wanted to note that Mr. Kramvik's report took longer than the PNF committee.